As we begin today's meeting, we like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the Treaty Territory, the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, before them, the traditional territory, the Horasni here on Orenda. We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Inuit and other global Indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honoured to live, work and enjoy this land. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem, be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Thank you. Welcome to our regular council meeting of September 11th, 2024. How did the clerk go through attendance today, of who's online and who's in person?
Through you, Mayor Brown. We have in person, councillor Santos, councillor Vicente, councillor Burrard. Online, councillor Palashi. In person, councillor Keenan. Councillor Maderas will be joining us online in about half an hour. Councillor Fortini in person. Councillor Power and deputy mayor Singh are also in person. And councillor Tour, I believe, is joining us shortly.
He's online.
Is he online? Okay, he's just logged into join us.
Okay, that takes us to approval of the agenda, and the clerk has a number of updates as well.
To Mayor Brown, revised agenda was published yesterday at approximately 3:00 PM. The following items were included in the revised agenda. 6.1, Proclamations for World Peace Day, September 21st, 2024. 8.1, Staff Update RE Government Relations Matters, the presentation was published. The minutes of the Committee of Council, September 4th, were published. And the summary of recommendations from the Planning and Development Committee meeting of September 9th were also published.
Great, thank you. One note I have here is that the Integrity Commissioner, Aminiza Sheikh, is available to join us between 10:30 and 11:30, and so we have that specific time booked with her, so if we could vary the agenda accordingly to hear that report in the time that she is not in court. And I also have one other request to vary the agenda, and that is, we have the Honourable Jean Augustine here today for her proclamation, and I hope if we can do that proclamation first, being respectful of her time, because she is still, even though she retired from Parliament many years ago, she is still doing 20 events a day. One of the many reasons she is extraordinary, and why we have a Jean Augustine proclamation in the city of Brampton, but if we could vary the agenda to have that to be the first proclamation. I have that motion moved by councillor Singh, seconded by councillor Vicente for the changes. Do you have another? Another, and councillor Vicente an item to add?
Thank you very much, Mayor, asking for councils indulge to add a discussion item on short-term rentals, please.
I don't see any other items. So, are the motion moved again by councillor, agenda as amended, moved by councillor Singh, seconded by councillor Vicente, all those in favor, motion carries. We are now at declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. We're now at item four, minutes. We have the following council minutes before us today. Minute City Council, July 10th. Minute Special Council meeting, August 12th. No questions, I have a motion moved by councillor Keenan, seconded by councillor Burrard to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor, motion carries. Council, as part of our consent motion process, I will read each agenda item that is subject to the consent motion, and any members may verbally identify that item to be held for debate during the meeting. Any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion voted on for approval. 8.1, Government Relations. 10.21, Staff Report, Appointments to the Brampton Women's Advisory Committee. 10.61 is to be held, and that is for the special event closures, Community Garba Street Festival, held by councillor Burrard. 11.1, Integrity Commissioner Report, we have a presentation, so hold. 12.1, Minutes Planning and Development Committee, from August 12th. 12.2, Held by Councillor Keenan. 12.3, Summary of Recommendations, Planning and Development Committee, September 9th. 13.1, Staff Report, Stop Up and Close and Surplus Declaration, portion of Lagerfield Drive Right Way Ward 6. 14.1, Correspondence Briefing Memo Addressing Encampments in Brampton. 14.2, Correspondence from Michael Petgrave, New Pro Driving Range Request for Municipal Significance for New Pro Driving Range Events. This is held by the ward councillor, which I believe is, councillor Burrard will hold it for councillor Palashi. Referenced Matters List. Closed Session, 19.1, City Council, July 10th. Closed Session Minutes, Committee of Council, September 4th. Legal Advice, 19.3. Report OLT Appeal, 19.4. 19.5, Committee Appointments. 19.6, Fire Chief Recruitment Results. And there'll be a public motion that comes with that. The clerk will summarize those items to be included on the consent motion for approval, and I have a motion that will be moved by councillor Keenan and seconded by councillor Power to approve the consent motion.
To Mayor Brown, following items are included on the consent motion. 8.1, Government Relations Matters. 10.2.1, A Report Regarding the Brampton Appointments to Brampton's Women's Advisory Committee. 12.1, Minutes of Planning and Development Committee, August 12th. 12.3, Summary of Recommendations from Planning and Development, September 9th. 13.1, Staff Report to Stop Up and Close and Surplus Declaration, portion of Lagerfield Drive. 14.1, Correspondence Addressing Encampments. 16.1, Referenced Matters List, and the following closed matter items. 19.1, 19.2, 19.3, 19.4, 19.5, and 19.6.
We're at item six, we have a number of proclamations today, which will be presented by the requesting organizations, and as I said, we were going to move with the Jean Augustine Day one first, because we had the pleasure of having Jean Augustine here in This is a nice surprise, and although she represented a Tobago in the House of Commons, we consider Jean, and our deputy mayor agrees with this, I know, we consider you an honorary Bramptonian, and I believe you were part of the celebration when we created a Jean Augustine School, because in his past life, the deputy mayor was a school board trustee. In honor of the Honorable Jean Augustine's 87th birthday, September 9th, 2024, is recognized as Jean Augustine Day in the city of Brampton. Jean Augustine is a Grenada-born Canadian politician. She is the first Black Canadian woman to serve as a federal minister of the Crown and a member of parliament. Jean Augustine has accomplished countless remarkable achievements and serves as an inspiration to us all. With a school named after her in Brampton and parks and other centers of learning across Ontario, her legacy will be with us for generations to come. We thank Jean Augustine for her devotion, courage and determination for championing change in the community and country. And I just want to say, on a personal note, you've been such a great friend to the city of Brampton. Anytime there's been something that we've wanted help on, without hesitation, you are there. I feel guilty sometimes always asking for your mentorship, because you're just so generous with your time. And we face tough issues, always the first to help, and have the courage to speak out and speak the truth is Jean Augustine. And I just think of last year, when we ruffled some feathers in Ottawa over the asylum claimant crisis, and you had many good friends in the PMO that were a little bit uncomfortable when you were calling for better treatment of asylum claimants, but that's you. It doesn't matter if it's the prime minister or the premier or a mayor, you speak the truth, and you've been such a champion for the community. And in that instance, you know, your advocacy led to Peel Region getting about 1,000 new shelter beds that were in the process of now unveiling, because you had the courage to speak out. And I was on some tough calls with the prime minister's office, and as soon as I said, you know, Jean Augustine is part of this, they're like, well, they sort of backed off. It was that disarming comment, as they knew if Jean was on an issue, they were, they had to get on the right side of an issue. It just, you have a name that now that brings such credibility with it, that it's a powerful force behind an issue. So, we brought this proclamation. I did have a request from the Black, City of Brampton Black Employees Association to say a word of appreciation. Normally, we only have council members that say a word on behalf, but I'm going to give the association one minute to say a tribute as well, knowing that that's not our custom here, but it's a special day when you have Jean Augustine. So if we could have a brief one minute from the employee association, they also wanted to say why it's, why they're proud to have a Jean Augustine Day every year in the city of Brampton. I also want to check her ID, because I don't think she's 87. With, with her work ethic, I think she's got to be a teenager. We'll put bylaw on that.
So, good morning, everyone. We just wanted to make sure that we gave the staff and also some of our community icons and leaders here in Brampton an opportunity to say thank you, to acknowledge this special moment that we have, you know, to say how much we appreciate one of our trailblazers, 87 years young, who's been an incredible force when it comes to the advancement of Black Canadians. So, with me here, some of our trailblazers here at the city of Brampton, and just want to give you, Marjorie, an opportunity and I'm willing to say thank you, and we will step aside.
I'm just going to echo what Gwen has said and what Mayor Brown has said, and everybody in this space will agree that your honourable Jean Augustine is an icon, and we are proud to have her as an honorary Bramptonian. Thank you.
May I use Marjorie McCaslin, some of the Commons of Black women of Brampton chapter? I can only echo what my two sisters have said. There's nothing more that I can say or add that they haven't already said. So, once again, thank you so much for being so present in Brampton. You always count when there's a calling for you, you never make an excuse, even if you have an agenda, you make sure that you include, you're included in whatever invitation is extended, and for that, I honour, I respect and I love you for who you are. Thank you.
I just want to say thanks to Jean for all that she's done for our community, Black History Month, and I keep telling her, move to Brampton, you're always here. This is the place to be. Thank you.
Icon, trailblazer, consistently great. Those are the three words. There's not much to say about Jean Augustine, because that would take us a couple of years to talk about the greatness of this lady. But icon, trailblazer, consistently great. Never go away, is always in the community speaking, giving us hope, inspiring us.
Thank you. Thank you very much again, Jean. We call you our queen, the queen Jean, Honourable Jean Augustine. Thank you so much, and thank you, Senator Brampton.
And I know our deputy mayor would like to speak to this as well, so.
So, we also had the opportunity to attend the Caribbean International Film Festival, where we celebrate the 87th birthday of the Honourable Jean Augustine on behalf of Mayor Brown, and that was a fantastic evening. What was common amongst everybody, you're an inspiration, trailblazer, and nobody believes you're 87. So, you made such a profound impact, and you continue to make an impact. With trustee McDonald, as you know, and NOKA, we had the opportunity to work on naming Jean Augustine School. We did Malala Yousafzai, we did Private Bookham, we had a movement to make more reflective names of the community, and now it is fitting that here in Brampton, we're the first to also recognize Jean Augustine Day. So it's an honour to work on these and keep going. And one term that the Satar player used for you, which I loved, empress. Empress, so that was very fitting. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I think the remainder of the photos, we are going to do after all the proclamations, but knowing that Jean has a busy schedule, maybe we'll present this proclamation together with councillor Jean, and then if you want to say a word or two, you're more than welcome to, but if members of council could join me in presenting this proclamation to Jean Augustine.
Coming to Canada and having real estate in Brampton, big real estate. Real estate that speaks to the growth of our country, the young people, and the support that you give to the young people in this community. Because we are building this fair and just and equitable society. I am honored by this proclamation, humbled by it. Because it is not often that one gets in one lifetime to receive such honors and to be loved by so many. I am eighty-seven years old. Nineteen thirty-seven was a very good year to be born in Grenada. There were several ups and downs and back and forth and falls and pick up yourself and dust yourself off and keep on going. But at the same time, the dream and the vision to be part of a society with people like yourselves, with people who are working to build a nation and to build communities and to help people get to the full, to develop and get to their full potential. And this is what I've had in this country. And so to have communities stand and say, you're an icon. My goodness, I don't even know what that means in the context of ensuring that not only the opportunities I have, but also that I provide opportunities for others. There is an old saying, you cannot change the direction of the wind, but you can certainly adjust your sail. And so what I've been doing along the way is trying to adjust my sail and trying to ensure that those who come after me can know that it's possible. This Canada, this Brampton, this community, this support that is so essential for us to develop, to reach that place where we are a fair, a diverse, and equitable, and inclusive Canada. Merci beaucoup, you do me honor, council, with this proclamation.
Thank you, Jean. What a, what a great way to start today's council meeting. This takes us to our proclamations, and we have a number of proclamations. The first proclamation is Arthritis Awareness Month. Nationwide community support has been critical throughout the arthritis society in Canada's seventy-six year history, enabling the organization to fulfill its mission to fight the fire of arthritis. With research, advocacy, innovation, information, and support, arthritis is a serious disease that causes debilitating pain, restricts mobility, and diminishes the quality of life. Six million people in Canada, one in five live every day with the brutal realities of arthritis, and there is no cure. Without a greater spotlight on this growing issue, the number of people in Canada with arthritis will rise to nine million by 2040. During Arthritis Awareness Month, we will raise awareness, mobilize and engage community to understand the devastating impacts of arthritis and stand with us to fight for arthritis-free future. I don't believe there's a rep here today from the arthritis society. But we do proclaim September as Arthritis Awareness Month in the city of Brampton. This next proclamation councillor Power would like to read out. It's for National Coaches Week, so I'll hand the proclamation to councillor Power to read on behalf of our council.
National Coaches Week, the city of Brampton recognizes the tremendous positive impact coaches have on athletes and communities. The purpose of National Coaches Week is to provide the three hundred thousand coaches who call Brampton and Ontario home with the resources, representation, and recognition they deserve for the time they devote to ensuring Canadians live an active and healthy lifestyle. A number of great coaches live and volunteer here, and we celebrate their commitments by saying, thanks, coach.
Thank you councillor Power. I don't believe there's a representative here from Coaches Month, but we acknowledge this importance of coaches in our community. Our next proclamation is for International Week of the Deaf, which is September twenty-third to twenty-ninth. International Week of the Deaf is recognized each year during the last full week of September. This week is celebrated by various activities by respective deaf communities in Canada and around the world. These activities call for the participation and involvement of various stakeholders, including families, peers, governmental bodies, professionals, sign language interpreters, and disabled person organizations. According to the World Federation of the Deaf, there are more than seventy million deaf people worldwide. More than eighty percent of them live in developing countries. American sign language is widely used by deaf and hard-hitting communities across Canada. This week aims to highlight the needs of the deaf and hard-hitting communities and encourages the dialogue within the community to introduce new ways of improving accessibility. And this is declared for September twenty-third to twenty-ninth. And do we have a representative here today from, for International Week of the Deaf? We do, okay. Wonderful. So sit tight, we'll have a special proclamation that we're gonna present to you at the conclusion of the proclamations. And I'll just set this aside to present to you with the other proclamations. This next proclamation councillor Brar has requested to read out, and this is Paint Brampton Pink Week. Over to councillor Brar.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Paint Brampton Pink Week. Whereas the Canadian Cancer Society, Paint Brampton Pink Week, is an annual initiative devoted to raising awareness for breast cancer. The Canadian Cancer Society is dedicated to funding game-changing research on all cancers, including breast cancer, advocating to make healthy living easier and supporting Canadians affected by cancer, so that no one faces cancer alone. Prior to the Canadian Cancer Society, CIBC Run for Cure, the city of Brampton and local businesses will decorate the city pink. This will help raise awareness for breast cancer and drive participation for the CIBC Run for the Cure in Brampton. Therefore, I, Patrick Mayor, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim September fifteen to twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, as Paint Brampton Pink Week in city of Brampton. Thank you.
And do we have a representative for this annual event? We do have a flag raising at city hall, and of course, the CIBC Run for the Cure is a major event. I know councillor Santos has been running at it a number of years in a row. And so we'll make sure to help spread the word about this annual fundraiser. Our next proclamation is for Rail Safety Week. Rail Safety Week is to be held across Canada from September twenty-third to twenty-ninth. Two hundred and twenty-nine railway crossing and trespassing incidents occurred in Canada in twenty twenty-three, resulting in sixty-six avoidable fatalities and thirty-nine avoidable serious injuries. Educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railway rights of way are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws, will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. Operational lifesavers, a public-private partnership, whose aim is to work with the public and railway industries, government, police services, media, and others to raise railway safety awareness. We proclaim September twenty-third to twenty-ninth Railway Safety Week in the city of Brampton. Our next two proclamations, our deputy mayor has asked to read out. And if you recall, the city of Brampton, on Gorianic Devji's five hundred fiftieth anniversary, made a bold commitment on tree planting across the city. One of the most ambitious tree planting campaigns in the entire country. And both these proclamations relate to that proud commitment the city of Brampton has. For National Forest Week and Brampton Tree Month. And this, just this past weekend, I was at a number of tree plantings with councillor Tor, councillor Power, deputy mayor Singh. And I know councillor Santos has been at a number of them as well. So very appropriate to have these proclamations read out in the city of Brampton that takes these weeks seriously.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. First is the proclamation for National Forest Week. Whereas this annual one-week campaign with the theme of two-eyed seeing, welcome all knowledge to sustain our forests, will be celebrated across Canada by individuals and organizations. Whereas Canada's forests are a valuable renewable resource that contributes to our economy and the livelihood of our communities. Whereas Canada's forests play a crucial role in maintaining healthy ecosystems, clean air and water, and wildlife habitat, whilst being an important aspect of climate change mitigation efforts. Whereas the city of Brampton and its citizens rely on the surrounding forests for livelihood, health, and recreation. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty-second to twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, as National Forest Week in the city of Brampton. Next is Brampton Tree Month. Whereas the city of Brampton has illustrated a long-standing continued commitment and leadership role with respect to the stewardship of its urban forests and trees. Whereas Brampton Tree Month will be an annual celebration during the month of September with tree and urban forest activities, outreach initiatives, and stewardship events to encourage residents to support and care for Brampton's trees. Whereas Brampton Tree Month will raise awareness of the importance of trees, celebrate city and community efforts and successes towards protecting and enhancing Brampton's urban forest. This month will also aid in Brampton civic engagement, creating healthier and resilient communities, fostering environmental stewardship, and helping achieve the city's target of planting one million trees in Brampton by 2040. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-four as Brampton Tree Month in the city of Brampton. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Our next proclamation is for Culture Days. Culture Days is a national initiative that celebrates arts, culture, and heritage across Canada, taking place annually over a period of three weeks in late September to early October. Brampton has a longstanding participant, has been a longstanding participant in this initiative, actively engaging its community in this celebration. Brampton is committed to enhancing connections between residents, diverse interests, abilities, and cultures through community-based arts and culture celebrations with a focus on nurturing local cultural development. During Culture Days, Brampton will actively engage residents, creators, through various events and activities that promote the exploration of and appreciation of arts, culture, and heritage. These activities will foster a deeper understanding, instill civic pride, and strengthen the bonds between individuals and their communities, contributing to the national celebration of Canada's cultural richness. And I believe we have representatives from Culture Days that are here. And we will present this proclamation at the conclusion of the proclamations. Just sit tight. Okay, our next proclamation is World Mitochondrial Disease Week, otherwise known as WMD. The human body is fueled by trillions of microscopic powerhouses called mitochondria. Presented almost every cells of our bodies, these tiny but mighty energy-producing structures generate the energy we need to survive. When there's a dysfunction with these important structures in one or more of the parts of the bodies, we see mitochondrial diseases appear. World Mitochondrial Disease Week, this year is from September sixteenth to twenty-second. This week's goal is to raise awarenesses for mitochondrial health and diseases on a global scale. That this initiative helps raise awarenesses for mitochondrial diseases in Canada and across the globe, which can be crucial for the development of treatments, research, and providing support for those living with mito. There are hundreds of mitochondrial diseases, but because mito is very hard to diagnose, many people don't realize they have these diseases. There is a strong need for more mitochondrial disease research to support those living and caring for loved ones with mito and for clinicians to be able to diagnose and treat Canadians living with mito. We declare September sixteenth to twenty-second as World Mitochondrial Disease Week in the city of Brampton. Our next proclamation councillor Brar has requested to speak to as well. I think given her background in healthcare, it's very appropriate that she speaks to these proclamations today.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the Walnut Foundation is a men's health and prostate cancer support group founded in two thousand and seven. The organization is dedicated to building awareness about prostate cancer and providing education and support to men and their families impacted by prostate cancer. The Canadian Cancer Society estimates twenty-seven thousand nine hundred will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in Canada and five thousand will die of the disease in twenty twenty-four, with black men being two times as likely to die of prostate cancer. Given the adverse impacts of this disease on black communities, the Walnut Foundation is engaged in a number of activities throughout September. The aim of these activities is to build awareness, facilitate earlier detection, and provide resources to those impacted by prostate cancer as a way of reducing the incidence and deaths from prostate cancer. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-four as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Brampton. And I do just wanna acknowledge, we do have the Walnut Foundation and their members here today. So we'll be definitely presenting that proclamation today. We're so proud of the work that you do.
Just to note councillor Brar, I know up in your ward and councillor Plessy's ward, every year we have the walk. What a turnout this year at the Paul Plessy Recreation Centre. There's just a sea of people there to support the Walnut Foundation, so thank you for the work you do. And we'll present this proclamation to you at the conclusion of the proclamations. Our last proclamation, I believe, is World Peace Day. Hopefully I haven't not missed any, looking at the clerk. I know we added some at the beginning. World Peace Day, each year World Peace Day is known as the International Day of Peace, and it's celebrated on September twenty-first. The United Nations has declared this day as a day dedicated to strengthening ideals of peace within ourselves and among all nations and people. The Brampton Meditation Center has been serving Brampton for over twenty-one years. Over eight thousand students have benefited from their free meditation courses, workshops, and programs. The center's services are designed to empower our understanding of ourselves while providing powerful tools for self-transformation. Through this student experience, a collective awakening of consciousness and the awareness of personal peace and empowerment based on our values of respect, humility, and compassion. When we change, our world changes. World Peace Day will be celebrated in Brampton with a flag raising at Kenwillan Square, followed by inspirational music messages from local peace builders and a community meditation session led by the Brampton Meditation Center. And if you haven't seen them, every week at the farmer's market, you see them there, they're so involved in our community. You know, the Brampton Meditation Center is intertwined with the fabric of our downtown. So grateful that they curated this annual event at Kenwillan Square. And so we declare September twenty-first as World Peace Day in the city of Brampton. And I believe we have a representative from them here today. So I'm gonna take the proclamations we haven't presented up to the front, and we'll take a photo with each organization and members of council.
Thank you for being signing today.
So this takes us to announcements, and we have three announcements today. The first announcement is for Garden of Waves, Sound Market Garden of Waves, Sound Market, September 28th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Snell Grove Community Center. The council sponsor for this is councillor Tor, and I believe Jeff Dunkley, an artist, will be making an announcement. Do we have Jeff Dunkley here in person? Okay, great.
It's Jeff Dunkley. But anyways, so my announcement for Garden of Waves, exciting announcement, Garden of Waves is coming to Brampton. Hi, everyone, my name is Jeff Dunkley. I'm a musical and visual artist from Brampton. I've always had a passion for the arts and connecting with the community, and I'm glad to be here today to talk to you about my upcoming music event in collaboration with Culture Days and the city of Brampton, Garden of Waves. Garden of Waves is a free event, free public sound market event taking place in Brampton at Snell Grove Community Center, Saturday, September 28th, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The purpose of the event is to showcase local recording artists who have been actively honing their craft. Garden of Waves was created to bridge the gap between artists and the community and give artists a chance to perform, share, and discuss their craft. Artists will host their own sound booth where they can play their music for patrons and sell any merchandise they may have. Think farmer's market but for recording artists. Don't miss out on this amazing celebration of community and creativity. Whether you're a music lover, a market enthusiast, or just looking for a great day out, experience sound at the Garden of Waves. We can't wait to see you there. You can get more info on the event at Brampton's Culture Days website, brampton.ca/culturedays, or my Instagram, @jeddunkley. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Tor is the sponsor of this announcement. Did he like to speak to it as well?
Yes, please do you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, for coming and making this announcement in front of council. I know it's your first time doing this, and we encourage all artists in the city, you know, when you have any events like this, please do come make that announcement before council so that council will be aware of it, but so will members of public that will attend this. I would be very happy to be at this event, and I encourage all my council colleagues and all my residents to take part in this as well. Thank you once again, Jeff.
Thank you. Our next announcement is for Brampton Rising Star Winners 2024. Councillor Brar is the sponsor and a great friend of the city of Brampton, Reverend Blessing AJCO, executive producer, Black Community Canada Television, will make the announcement. Do we have Reverend Blessing with us online or in person? I don't see Reverend Blessing. To the clerk, do we have Blessing online?
Well, I thought they were here in person, but let's just double check. Can you see them all? I don't see them.
Okay, we'll hold it down to see if they, if they come on. Next one is the Undergrowth Book Launch. Council sponsor councillor Santos, who is a big fan of books, and Ricky Lima will be making an announcement. Do we have Ricky Lima here? Okay, wonderful.
Good morning, everybody. I prepared a video because I'm very nervous, so this is my very charismatic and attractive virtual self. Thanks, me Ricky. You know, I've been a Brampton resident my whole life, all 36 glorious years in Ward Four, and I'm here to tell you that I wrote a book, and it just came out. My book is a graphic novel called Undergrowth. It's about young adults who one night are killed by invaders from beyond, but they are resurrected by the spirit of the planet and given giant organic mechs to fight back. I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to use as much hyperbole as possible for the biggest impact. The book is being published by Top Shelf Productions, which is an imprint of the LA-based company IDW. Top Shelf has a long history of publishing awesome books like the Canadian classic Essex County, and comic legends such as watchman writer Alan Moore. IDW proper publishes such love series as Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, Godzilla, and Star Trek. So my book's in very good company. So far, the book has garnered a lot of international attention. It received a starred review in Kirkus. Kirkus is one of the biggest and most respected book review outlets in the world. Out of the 20-plus books reviewed in the category for that month, only five got a star. That's a big deal, man. So what happens when you pair an American publishing company with a Canadian writer, an Italian artist, and Ukrainian colorist? A pretty frickin' sweet book, apparently. This book is truly an international affair. So far, it's only been produced in English, but I'm manifesting into existence a bunch of foreign editions in many languages. And movie deals? Sure, why not? The book's great. So you can pick up the book anywhere that books are sold. In fact, I secretly signed a couple of copies at the Indigo on Bever, where I used to work. But I bet they're all sold out now because the book's awesome. Thanks for your time, and I hope you check out the book and enjoy it.
Amazing. Awesome. Awesome video. Councillor Santos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ricky, for coming in as well as Brampton Arts Organization. Just a heads up to council, councillor Tor and I had the privilege of giving a tour to the Brampton Arts Organization and the various advisors that they have. And Ricky, and I believe the gentleman before you was also part of that tour, and what councillor Tor and I shared with the artists inside these very chambers was that we want to hear more from artists in the form of delegations, in the form of announcements. And we're so fortunate because the Brampton Arts Organization has been able to create a space that's arms-length that is now able to effectively engage and participate in council in this way. And Ricky, and also, you know, the delegations and the announcements that are going to be coming forward in the future, we would probably not know otherwise. And so, thank you to Bao. Thank you to the incredible arts community that is now very effectively engaging with council. And I just wanted to point out, Mr. Mayor, that Ricky was at Hockey Night in Brampton, showcasing another one of his books related to the Maple Leafs. And thank you for participating in that as well.
And I believe it's put into every program, so we love showcasing local talent. Brampton has talent, and you're an example of that, so keep up your passion, and we look forward to cheering you on as you, as they make a movie over one of your books. Just invite us to the premiere, okay? Our next item is seven. We have no delegations listed for today. We dealt with 8.1 on consent. That takes us to, there's no reports from corporate officials. That takes us all the way to 10.21. 10.2 was on consent as well. 10.3, 10.4, 10.61. And that is held by councillor Brar. Councillor Brar.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I think last week, we had a delegation from a group that came in for our Garba event, which was coming forward today. We got a report back, but we're so excited. They're here in the audience today, and we know the city of Brampton promotes diversity, and we, we love the Garbas that you had, you know, the year before and the year before that. So this is the third annual Garba. I do believe we have a motion that we would be bringing forward.
Put the motion on the screen, please, if we could.
Can we have the motion on the screen?
I believe you wanted to amend that motion, councillor Brar?
Yes. Perfect. So we see the motion on the screen. So we will be approving the, the special event road closure for Work Green Parkway to be approved.
So just remove the word "not," yeah?
Yeah.
We just need that to be amended.
Thank you. So we have the motion on the, on the screen.
Moved by councillor Plessy, second by councillor Brar. Oh, councillor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a lot of work went into this, and so from what we've been told, that this is probably the biggest Garba in Brampton, potentially. We've gone to the event, it's such an amazing event, extremely well-run, but there's always a way to fix things and do things better. And I think that, you know, the organizers know now what we need to continue to make sure that everybody's safe and we're doing it to the best of our ability, and whatever we can do to help, please let us know. In looking at this and the amount of work that councillor Brar has put into this as well, you know, just trying to figure, figure it out. Sorry, I'm a little bit conflicted here. I see some princesses in the audience, so I'm just, and so it's, we just want to make sure that, you know, this is the best of the best. It's at a, it's at a great location, Geta Park, and with some great residents. So we just want to make sure that the, the staff report or the, the motion coming out of this moved by councillor Brar and myself are in support of not only the Work Green Parkway Garba, but also the River Mount Garba as well. So if we can have that reflective of the motion, and thanks to staff for the amount of work that, that you've put into this as well, the amount of phone calls that we've tried to get on and troubleshoot things, so thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, motion carries.
Nobody's allowed to speak. Mr. Mayor, can we just make sure that it's reflective of what I just, River Mount as well? Because the deferral was on both, and I only see the Work Green Parkway one here.
So the clerk's saying this is the only one deferred.
Okay, so, oh, because River Mount was one day? Okay, so we'd also like to make River Mount two days. We'd like to make Work Green Parkway two days as well, being, and the residents know that the start time is 5:00, shutdown time is 11:59, and that shutdown cleanup, everything off of the road, the road opens again for both. So if we can have that reflective of... You can ask him to come up, but he can't speak from the audience, Mr. Mayor.
So do you need additional time to get the language correct?
Actually, through you, Mayor, if we could just have a moment to get caught up, we may have to do this in separate motions.
So what I'm going to suggest is AJ Blessing is now here. We had, we had got to Reverend Blessing's motion earlier, but councillor Brar held the motion until you can get here. So why don't we do councillor, why don't we do Reverend Blessing's announcement? And by the time we finish Reverend Blessing's announcement, we'll have the word worksmith with councillor Plessy. If I can ask the clerk and councillor Plessy just to have an aside. Okay, Reverend Blessing, please come up. Councillor Brar has held an announcement to come from you.
Thank you so much. It's a privilege to stand here today. I want to give a greeting to our honorable, our excellency, Mayor Patrick Brown, and all the councillors. I want to accort to councillor Bratou and everyone that have supported our initiative. It is a pleasure to be here today to present the winners of Brampton Rising Stars, Season One. This initiative has brought out the incredible talent and creativity within our community, and those winners have truly shown their talent. I want to thank every one of you that have supported in making this platform possible. Your dedication to art and culture helps foster the grant, the growth of our city future stars. Without further delay, I proudly present to you the winners of Brampton Rising Stars. I thank you all for all your effort and support. They are here. Can you come down, please? I know we have a video clip to show, probably we'll send it later. Yeah, so sorry about that. So, so today it was a very credible event. As you can see here, we have 25 contestants on that day at Rose Theatre, and we have three winners, three wonderful winners. To top it off, our first winner, we're five in, in a group. They won the first prize. And then the second winner, Tobias. Then the third winner was Zaria. Zaria, second, okay, second Zaria, and then Tobias, the third. So we are very excited to run with these winners. They are, they are, they have been chosen from the judges among the contestants, and I know that they are going to make the Brampton proud. For the first one year to the next quarter, we're going to promote them, we're going to sign a deal with them, we're going to, you know, showcase them in our Brampton. And I want to say that during this event at Rose Theatre, Rose Theatre was packed up, containing all the people that come from different parts of our province, and we receive a lot of accolades from different dignitaries in different cities, and most of them also came. So today, these are, these are winners for Brampton Rising Star.
Congratulations, and I believe councillor Brar wanted to say a word of congratulations as well. So councillor Brar is the council sponsor?
Perfect, yes. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Brampton City Council, I want to offer my heartfelt congratulations to all the remarkable contestants who have participated in the Rising Stars Talent Competition, and a special congratulations to the winners of the JDL Triple Act. Their performance throughout the competition has been incredible, and it has been showcasing an impressive range of artistic talent and creativity, and their win is certainly deserved. So congratulations again, and I would also like to recognize BCTV for providing such a valuable plat, valuable platform that has allowed our youth to shine and express themselves. So again, congratulations again, and thank you, Reverend Blessing, for putting on an amazing talent show, especially for our youth. We know in our city of Brampton that we have a lot of youth, but we need somewhat, we need, we need a place to showcase their talent, and this was the place. So I'm so happy to see all of you here, and if I can request, if we can have a picture with all the contestants. with all the contestant winners.
You all know Mayor Patrick Brown? It's very important. He's the hero of our city, right? So take note of him. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you Reverend Blessing. And that returns us to item 10.61. And just to say while we're getting that motion up on the screen, how excited we are to have another garba season before us. I had a chance to go to a few garbas this weekend, and no city in the country does a garba like the city of Brampton. And every neighborhood has their own garbas during Navarretri, and I just, I love the music, I love the dance, I love the celebration there is. Thank you Councilor Plessy and Brier for making sure we get this right. And to the clerk, do we have the correct wording now?
Through you, Mayor, we're just adding this up on screen now. Councilor Plessy, does that reflect the change you intended?
Okay. I would note the city garba is September 20th, and Pathak Shula from Humans for Harmony has sent a note to my office that if any members of council need assistance wearing traditional garba attire, he will help in that selection. And I believe Councilor Plessy will be performing one of the first garbas on September 20th. So looking forward to seeing his dance moves. Motion moved by Councilor Brier, seconded by Councilor Plessy. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to item 11, report from the City of Brampton's Integrity Commissioner Moniza Sheek, and I believe we are in that time period window in which she was available. Will she be brought on virtually?
Through you, Mayor, she is joining us virtually, we're just... I don't believe she's been able to join us yet. Hi, good morning. Oh, this is... I believe Sav is here on her behalf.
Okay.
Hi there, I am, so my name is Sav Ahn, I'm here from the Integrity Commissioner's Office. Moniza is joining at 10:45, so if the preference is to wait for her, we can wait for her. She should be able to wrap within the time slot window provided, or I can...
Yeah, so we're happy to deal with the next item and return to this. Okay, just let the clerk know when she is online. This takes us to our next item, we'll hold that one down, which is committee reports. We dealt with 12.1 on consent, 12.2, Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I'd like to do here is I want to defer my motion from last week, which was CW 309 2024, until such a time that the mayor be requested to write a letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Minister Calandra, outlining the issue of squalor-like homes in sections of downtown Brampton identified as student overflow zones. And I believe Deputy Mayor Singh will second it.
Okay, moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh. All those in favor of the deferral?
Mr. Mayor, I'm on board.
Counselor, okay. So Counselor Tor, I've been informed by the clerk that a motion for deferral we have to vote on first before we can have any debate.
Sorry, could you clarify that again?
Uh, to the clerk.
Deferrals are non-debatable.
Deferrals are non-debatable.
But aren't we debating the motion that's being displayed on the screen right now, or not?
No, no, no. You can't speak to anything, it's a deferral, take the vote, unless the council's willing to stand down.
So for deferral, it's non-debatable, Counselor Tor?
So just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is the motion of deferral that's on the screen right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all requests are recorded, vote on this.
Okay, the motion of deferral moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh, record a vote requested. On the deferral.
Through you, Mayor, I'll call out everybody's name and ask for a yes or no vote. We're voting on the deferral. Okay, Counselor Fortini, how do you vote? Counselor Maderos? I'll come back and check with Counselor Maderos. Counselor Power, how do you vote? Counselor Tor, how do you vote?
Against the motion.
Counselor Keenan, how do you vote? Counselor Plessy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Brier, how do you vote? Counselor Vicente, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Santos, how do you vote? Deputy Mayor Singh, how do you vote? Mayor Brown, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Counselor Maderos, how do you vote? Thank you.
Yes.
And that is carried, it's a 10 to 1 vote.
Okay, that takes us to item 12.3, which was on consent. That now takes us to 14.2, which is the new pro-driving range, request for municipal significance. I believe that this technicality has been addressed with the local councillor, and Counselor Plessy will speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing really to speak to, happy to support this, great, great new business, and I think there's an email coming to all members of council for an invitation for this Friday. So looks happy to support, and I think Councilor Brier is okay to second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Plessy, seconded by Counselor Brier. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to item 15.1, which is a motion put forward by Counselor Brier and myself in support of the Congress of Black Women of Ontario Brampton's Chapter 35 Annual Scholarship Awards Event at the Cyril Clark Theatre and waiving the fees for that. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to item 16.1, which was on consent, that's referred matters list, public question period 17. Oh, the added item, yes. Which is 16.2, Counselor Vicente, discussion item.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thanks, members of council, for allowing me to add this item. With respect to short-term rentals, which we now allow in the city of Brampton, what measures exist at the moment with the city wherein a short-term rental property causes repeatedly disruptions to the local neighborhood? Where there's 311 calls, police calls, sometimes 911 calls, yes? And there doesn't seem to be any effort by those owners to really rectify the situation and to operate their units in a way that does not cause constant disruption to the community.
Through you, the Chair. The city's short-term rental bylaw has a process by which licenses are issued, licenses can be subject to conditions, licenses can also be suspended or revoked if the terms of the licenses are not complied with. So we do have a process for that, and I'd be happy to report back to council with more detail about that process and the way that the city can exercise its ability to revoke or suspend licenses for non-compliance with the terms.
Thank you through you, Chair, to the city's listener. Thank you very much. I would like to see that come forward to council, because in dealing with some Airbnbs, I'm sure not all, most operate flawlessly, as it were, but there are instances where there's a lot of consternation that takes place and a lot of anguish that happens, and it affects the local area, usually the next-door neighbors, et cetera. And so if that report could come forward, that would be very helpful information for us to know what are the steps that a member of council can take to see that potentially happen, where there are issues. And if I could ask, I know that in conversations with Counselor Keenan, that he felt that this was important as well, Counselor Keenan, ask if you could second the motion, please.
Counselor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that hasn't been my, I guess, experience in the past. I have, I have one in particular, the Airbnb, they've gone through all the different kind of rental, and this is essentially what we're talking about, right? And there's been three separate shootings at this one particular house, yet they still operate. They get kicked off of one site, but then somebody else comes in to take it, like it's, they know what they're doing. We can't, I don't think we can do anything about it, but I look forward to having this report come forward, because this is something I've been dealing with for over, it's over almost two years now, one particular house that, in my area. So happy to see this report come forward, and I was also happy to second it, but you have Counselor Keenan seconding the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries. This now takes us to item 17, which is the public question period. There's a 15 limit for, minute limit for questions and answers, are there any questions in the chamber today or online? The clerk, was there any submitted?
Through you, Mayor, I see none online.
Okay. This takes us to bylaws that give effect to council decisions made at this meeting. I have a motion from Counselor Power, seconded by Counselor Santos, to approve bylaws 132 2024 to 143 2024 inclusive. All those in favor, motion carries. I would note that all our closed session business is completed, but there was one public item that was coming from closed session. If we could put that on the screen now. This is a bit of exciting news, maybe Counselor Santos could speak to this as Chair of the committee. I believe we're releasing the name of our...
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, both Counselor Brier and I, and I'll ask Counselor Bratton to join me in some of the remarks as well. We did go through this process, and a huge thank you to the clerk's office and team for helping us through this process of the inaugural committee for Brampton's Women's Advisory Committee. The response from the women in Brampton was incredible, we had so many people respond and impressive applications. We're very happy to share and welcome the members of this inaugural committee and get our sleeves rolled up to get to work. International Day of the Girl is coming up very soon next month, and we're planning to have our first meeting of this committee just before the International Day of the Girl. So thank you very much, looking forward to working with all these incredible women on this committee, Counselor Brown.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we are very, very excited. So when these applications came through, we were very excited looking at them. If you were to even read some of the passion, how passionate these women were, how, you know, excited they were to be on this committee, it's incredible to see the work that they have done, and to have these women on the committee and finally starting up this Women's Advisory Committee at the city of Brampton is very, very exciting for us, and can't wait to see all the women come together and make changes here at the city of Brampton.
Thank you. So all those in favor of that item that came out in public? Motion carries, moved by Counselor Brier and Santos. The next item actually relates to Counselor Santos as well, 19.6. And the clerk will read the public motion.
Through you, Mayor, follow-up from closed session, bylaw 144 2024 is prepared for council's consideration to appoint Nick Roller as the Brampton Fire Chief.
So congratulations to our new fire chief. Big shoes to feel, because the old chief, Bill Boyes, was phenomenal, best chief in the country, so no pressure, Fire Chief Nick, but we know, I've only heard great things. A lot of, a lot of confidence from every, we did our background checks and everyone is, everyone's saying wonderful things. As Chair of the committee, do you want to speak to that, Counselor Santos?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and so we've been awaiting this moment, and before congratulating the new Fire Chief and welcoming Nick officially at this council meeting, just a big, huge thank you and appreciation to Commissioner Acting Chief at the time, Bill Boyes, who was, had two jobs on his shoulders during this time up until this point. So thank you very much for continuing the role as we were looking for our new Fire Chief in Brampton. And Nick, I'm sure you're watching the council meeting from headquarters perhaps right now. Congratulations to you, and we look forward to you being welcomed here at the city of Brampton as the new Fire Chief.
Okay, wonderful news. Oh, go.
Through the Mayor, to all of council, thank you for your support over the years. Nick, we didn't think this was going to happen this quick today, so he'll come back next, council, but he's very excited, he's going to be a great addition to the team, he'll do great for the city, and he cares about fire service, he cares about the community, and I know he's excited to lead Brampton and continue making it a progressive public safety leader here in the country.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay. That completes our close, do you need to vote on that motion, or? Okay, so moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Plessy. All those in favor, motion carries. Now we'll go back to the item of the IC's report, and I believe we have the Integrity Commissioner online now.
You do, thank you so much, Mayor Brown, my sincerest apologies to members of council, and thank you so much for your flexibility this morning.
Okay, the floor is yours, Moniza.
Okay, well, sorry. Just in terms of a brief summary, we have provided a copy of the annual report. The challenge in terms of timing this on the report was a large part in due to 2022. As members of council are aware, I was IC for a period of 2022, and so there's a number of complaints that we've put into the interim report or into the annual report that cover 2022. In terms of 2022 specifically, although I have outlined, keeping in consideration confidentiality, of course, portions of...
Are there any questions for the Integrity Commissioner? Seeing none. We, seeing none. We have a motion moved by Counselor Plessy, seconded by Counselor Power to receive the report. All those in favor, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brown, and thank you to members of council as well. And if you don't need Ms. Khan or I further, please let us know if it's okay for us to be excused.
Yes, please, you're more than welcome to be excused. This takes us to our confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Counselor Vicente and seconded by Counselor Maderos to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor, motion carries. Our last item of business is item 21, adjournment. Council is next scheduled to meet on September 25 at 9:30 a.m. I have a motion moved by Counselor Fortini and seconded by Counselor Tor to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, motion carries.